As I said, this model, we think, offers many more advantages and is the best fit for the recently approved Strong Town Administrator model. And as you can see from the statistics that Phil just told us about, that this five-member model represents a much more appropriate size for what is, in effect, a board of directors for a Strong Town Administrator that now becomes the CEO. So with that, we would respectfully request that you support this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Chinman, Precinct 2. I heard an argument made that five members would permit communication between the members that would not violate the open meeting law and thus be more efficient. And of course, it's going to be more efficient always to evade the requirements of the open meeting law. But that's tough. That's not the point here. We can't evade the requirements of the open meeting law, which require that deliberations of public bodies be public. And I'm reading from the Attorney General's Guide to the Open Meeting Law. "To be a deliberation, the communication must involve a quorum of the public body." A quorum is usually a simple majority of the members of a public body. Thus, a communication among fewer than a quorum of the members of a public body will not be a deliberation unless there are multiple communications among the members of the public body that together constitute communication among a quorum. So if you have this string of two people talking to each other, you're going to violate the open meeting law. That should not be a reason for approving a five-member Board of Selectmen. There are reasons, I think good ones, but that one should be pulled off the table. Evading the requirements of the open meeting law is not something that we should be considering an advantage of a five-member board.
Mr. Chinman, if I could, as your moderator. So clearly, the example you're suggesting of a daisy chain of two members conversing is a concern, but isn't it also possible that the speaker was trying to say just having one other member to consult with about ideas in front of them is reasonable and is an advantage?
I thought I heard the example given of a daisy chain being something that would be possible and more efficient.
Okay.
Unless they're going to be very, very careful to make sure that the two people who've spoken don't speak to any of the remaining three, you're going to have a violation of the open meeting law. This is not an advantage of the five-member board.
Fair enough. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Rosetti, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. I was just curious, how many of these towns with the five-member boards have a Strong Town Administrator as well? Because I know we just changed, or actually, I don't even know if it's been implemented yet. Should we give it a chance to work with a three-member board before we switch to a five-member board? Has that been taken into account?
Okay, the Speaker has two questions. Looking to the Town Government Study Committee, Ms. Neely, do you wish to -- or excuse me, Mr. Walker. You're recognized for the purpose of addressing the questions.
When there's a void, someone has to fill it. So let me try to answer all three questions, actually. What I believe that was Mr. Chinman was referring to is the issue of what are called serial conversations under the open meeting law. There was no suggestion in our presentation, and it is not our recommendation, that we do anything to violate that part of the open meeting law. On the other hand, the fact that a member might be able to consult with one other member on an issue before the body deliberates, we think, is an advantage. With regard to the other two questions, I don't know that we have specific figures on exactly which of the towns have Strong Town Administrators, but it is clear that many of them do have that model. And the question of allowing the Strong Town Administrator model to take hold was something that we discussed at length with the selectmen. Under our proposal, we included some language that said that this could not be implemented any earlier than the spring of 2017. With the provision now for a referendum, that probably will even be extended. So I think we've certainly provided the time for the Town Administrator model, which we expect to be approved by the legislature probably sometime early next year.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Hurley, Chairman of Board of Selectmen. Just to answer that previous question, the Board of Selectmen did have serious concerns about just that, that is it too much too soon? And we believed that it was, that we should -- you know, the switch from a Town Administrator to a Strong Town Administrator is going to be a very huge undertaking for all of us, for employees of the town as well as the selectmen and the other elected boards for that matter. So it's a big change. And we really felt that that should be allowed to play itself out before we added another big change on top. And secondly, we felt strongly, because in the original recommendation, there was no referendum for it to go out to a townwide vote, and we felt strongly that it should because it's a change in your elected representatives and how the townspeople are represented. We are certainly happy to see that that is now in the recommendation. But we still have concerns for that reason. We did agree that if it was postponed out to fiscal, out to 2017, it would be more preferable to have the change in '16.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you're recognized. Do you wish to be recognized?
Hi, Ted Deber, Precinct 5. And I'm not sure whether Mr. Hurley was suggesting, which was what I was going to say, was that -- first of all, let me back up for a second. First of all, I want to say that I have tremendous respect for the Government Study Committee and for all the hours they've put in, and I appreciate all the time they've spent on this. But the way it was phrased with "too much too soon" was something that had occurred to me because last spring, we -- our town meeting voted on a, you know, the Strong Town Administrator, the main purpose of which, at least as I understood it, was to take a lot of the burden and responsibility off the selectmen. Without knowing, without having the experience of a Strong Town Administrator with a three-member Board of Selectmen, I'm not sure whether we should approve adding to selectmen. I realize it has to go to the town petition vote as well, or referendum vote, rather. But the town, at that point, as I understand it, will not have any experience with a Strong Town Administrator and a three-person Board of Selectmen either. And it just seems to me that we ought to have a period of time to be able to evaluate that before adding to selectmen.
Thank you. Mr. Murren, do you wish to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Murren, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. And I'll try to be as brief as possible, but I just want to kind of stress the importance of what we're looking to vote on tonight. You know, we're asking the residents of this town to completely change how our executive body is currently made up. We're asking the residents of this town to go from a three-member board to a five-member board. That's about a 66%, or we'll round it up, 70% change in the executive body of this town. And again, I have the utmost respect for the Town Government Study Committee and its members. I had the privilege of serving with the three former selectmen who are on the committee, and also the privilege of serving under Mr. Cronin as the Town Administrator. I think we really need to think this out a little bit. And I know that, you know, currently, because there is going to be a referendum, if you look at the original article as presented and voted, the original article had no referendum. And I had spoken to a number of people, people in my precincts, people in this town in general, and certainly others, and I even met, addressed the warrant committee about that. I had a very real concern that somehow we were going to short-circuit the residents' ability to make the final decision on this. And I am glad that the chairman of the warrant committee was able to do his due diligence on behalf of his committee and discovered that, sure enough, there will be a referendum question. But that was not the original intent of the article, and you can read the article as it's printed in the warrant, the original vote. We have to remember, the Town Government Study Committee voted to keep the three before they decided to change to vote for the five. We have to remember that what we're asking the residents to look at is something of complete difference than we've ever had before, and by most accounts, most things in life. Usually, change comes about because something needs a fixing. I'm not sure what needs a fixing here. I've lived in this town my whole life. There's been three selectmen during that whole time. I think they all work very hard on behalf of the residents of this town. I don't see the need for the five. In fact, there's been very little discussion at town meetings, and I've attended town meetings for a number of years, I don't ever recall any discussion at the town meeting floor about five selectmen. There was a reference made in May by, I think, the former member of the school committee who got up and said that she had heard that there may be an article coming forward with the five selectmen. But there's been no real discussion, so either there's been a real serious problem with how this town is being managed, or has been managed for decades, that needs a fixing, that nobody in this body and nobody in the town at large seems to have a problem with. So why are we doing it? Well, as best I can tell from talking to people, DOR recommends it. Well, DOR, you know, they're great people, and, you know, they work for the state, and they come up with great ideas and stuff. But this is Milton. This is our town. This is not the Department of Revenue's town, and it's just a recommendation. In fact, they made a recommendation that we look at the warrant committee. And I would be the first to stand up and say we shouldn't change one thing with the warrant committee. But they recommended that we do it, but that's not being discussed. So we kind of pick and choose what, you know, we feel is important. Well, the executive body of this town is important, and the three selectmen work very hard for the residents of this town. And there are -- and I'm going to go through a number of reasons why we should not. And I'll be brief because, like I said, this is going to be a referendum, so I feel a lot better because that'll give the residents in this town plenty of time to digest what it is they're being asked to consider when they go to the ballot box. Talk about the open meeting law, and I think it's already been discussed. You know, two selectmen can talk to each other, and another two can talk to each other. But nobody can talk to that fifth member, and none of the other two subgroups can talk to each other. I don't know where the improvement in communication is there. We lose transparency there because two members can talk offline, where now, all of the business has to be conducted in open session, on television, it's posted, there are minutes. I don't know what needs a fixing here. But somehow, Department of Revenue suggests it. The fact that other towns are doing something, we should jump on the bandwagon and do it. I have yet to find anybody to explain to me why it's five. If we need more people to divvy up work, then why don't we make it six? There is a community in this state with six. Why make it nine? Why five? Because everybody else is doing five. Why are we going to five? Because everybody else is going to five. That's not a legitimate answer to why we should be going to five. We lose accountability. Right now, each selectman has to stand and die figuratively on the decisions they make as members of the board when they decide to run for reelection. I think that's good accountability. I think that's the way the residents in this town wanted it. And I thank God that 88 years ago, the residents in this town had the wherewithal to vote a charter that made sure that any time there's a discussion about something that impacts elected officials, that it goes to the voters. That is good governance. Now, we all know, I mean, anybody, well, probably everybody in this room anyways, understands that the best form of local government is a mayoral government. And if you have a good mayor, that is the best form of local government. Nowhere could I find any document that said that a five-member Board of Selectmen is the second best, or that three members is the worst. So I don't know why we're even discussing this. I am kind of surprised that others aren't as concerned as I am, but that's okay, because I think we'll have the opportunity to address that with the residents as this referendum comes due. To talk about division of work, the Board of Selectmen can appoint as many committees as they want. There's a reference to the private sector. Town government, government, is not the private sector. It was never meant to be the private sector. It never will be the private sector. We are the Board of Directors. Every single resident of this town is a stakeholder in how this town operates. That has nothing to do whatsoever with a five-member or three-member board. We are going to be transitioning to a Strong Town Administrator, and that's a good -- that was, you know, discussed at the Maytown meeting, and it was voted, and I think that's a great idea. And that's something that the voters don't need to trouble themselves with, because just as the superintendent is selected by the school committee, so the Board of Selectmen should, no matter what the duties are, should decide who the Town Administrator should be. That's the way the government works. This town is very fortunate to have qualified people to serve on committees, like the Town Government Study Committee, the Warrant Committee, and all our other committees, and for the members of the Board of Selectmen. And I applaud the Board of Selectmen because right from the get-go, they were steadfast in their belief that the referendum question should be put forth on this article.
Mr. Murren, you're at nine minutes, and our rules call for a 10-minute maximum.
I'll just be real brief. You know, we're doing this because the Department of Revenue wants us to do it. We're doing it because all these other communities are doing it, but nobody has said what it is in Milton that we really need to have that change. And I'll just leave you with, well, the Town Government Study Committee says, you know, we have a budget of $100,000, $100 billion, and that's true. But if you take out the school budget, which is controlled by the school committee, you take out the park budget, which is the park department, take out the cemetery, which is the cemetery trustees, take out the library, which is the library, you're under $50,000, and that is exactly what was just put up on the board. That is fine, because we're under 50. Now, if we want to do an override for $100 million and get ourselves, you know...
Thank you, Mr. Murren.
Thank you.
Ms. Augustine, do you wish to be recognized? You're recognized.
Diane DiTulio-Agostino, Precinct 9.
Oops. Do you want to go to the front?
That's all right. I've got it. I'd like to ask one question before I make a comment. Didn't the town of Milton originally have Water and Sewer Commissioners, and then the Board of Selectmen took over the work of the Water and Sewer Commissioners many years ago?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. I appreciate Kevin Murren's comments, and I definitely appreciate the comments regarding the open meeting law, because, as most people know in the room, that's something that we have to adhere to. Even a subcommittee of two of a committee of five would have to post meetings. So I want to be sure that everybody's aware of that, and if you're new to the process, even two out of the five would have to produce, do a posting. The whole issue of having five, in fact, I know the former selectmen appreciate the work the committee did in contacting all the former selectmen to ask why, and there were many other reasons besides just because the Department of Revenue. I couldn't care less if the Department of Revenue told us to do something and there was no sound reason for it. The soundness is because it's not just a $100 million budget. We have maybe the same amount of residents, but to have a board of five gives residents more access to those officials. And in Kevin's own words, "I'm thrilled that this is going to go to the residents of the town so that there can be a wide-open debate on it, and discussion has to the benefits." So I don't see anything negative with approving this tonight, because you can all go out and campaign however you want it and let the residents decide. I do believe, with the open meeting requirements, that it could only be for the better to get more brains. Thank you.
Thank you, Sacks. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Terry McNeil, Precinct 3. I should warn you, my wife is traveling and I have a babysitter, so I want to take my 10 minutes, but I might not. I might not take it. I think, when I first heard about the five-member board, my first thought was, who else is crazy enough to do what you guys do? Because it's a lot of work that the Board of Selectmen do, and I thought, are we going to find two people who would actually do it? Two more people out there. And thanks to everyone in the past who's done it. But I think, you know, a couple of the points Mr. Murren made really resonated with me in the opposite direction, with all due respect. What worked for Milton 80 years ago doesn't work today. That's not the town today. And that's what all of those other communities that we like to think are pure communities have recognized. And us in Belmont and Hingham are kicking around, being the last in the room to realize what others have realized. There is not time in today's world for all of us to do what you do. I see Katie at work. We both work at the Prue. So does Dave's wife. We took the train after Glover drop-off this morning. Everyone's constantly running around. If it's parents, if it's folks, no one's retiring anymore. Everyone's lives are busier today. This model may have worked, the three-member Board of Selectmen, when there was one working parent, and people actually left work at five. If I ask people to raise their hands, I don't think there's too many of us who have an eight-hour day, or aren't on email, or drafting, or responding to people all night. And I know that through my kids in the schools, teachers are doing the same thing. So I think part of it is an ability to share the burden, which maybe will bring, I think, I think it was Mr. Murren who mentioned, we're not hearing anybody say what's wrong with Milton. Well, we're not hearing from Milton in large part. This room is not truly representative of Milton demographically. While it may be, while there may be different viewpoints represented here, I'm not yet 40, and I'd like to remind people of that, but if I ask people to raise their hand who's in that group, there's not going to be a lot, and that's not a bad thing. We're very fortunate for your service, but the younger people in this town aren't involved in the town government. And I think of how people are involved. I see Melissa Dunn here. Melissa set up the Milton Neighbors Facebook page. That's not part of town government, but 3,500 people in town rely on it to know what's going on. We're lucky she does it. Betsy Crowley, who's sitting next to her, another young, new-to-Milton parent, has joined with Cindy Christensen and Cheryl Flightman and the others fighting the airport to get involved. But we're not running for selectmen, and school committee's always going to get the parents' self-interest, but we're not running for these other groups because people don't have the time. And it's not just young parents, it's anybody. You don't have time to do this. Sharing that burden, allowing people to be able to respond. I think Diane just touched on the point of being able to actually respond to a constituent. That's one reason to go from three to five members. I remember when Dennis was selectman, he was brave enough, maybe foolish enough, to respond to Milton neighbors during the storm, say, "Hey, I'll send a plow over." If he didn't respond within three minutes, somebody was yelling at him on Facebook. I mean, that's the world we live in today, it's fast-paced. We've empowered our administrator, our Town Administrator, to have a more powerful role. This is the logical corollary to, yes, how the private sector works, but also how the world works today and how people want more efficiency and greater ability for folks to communicate and focus and form subcommittees. And so I've made a complete 180 in the past few months, and not the best at reading the warrant before the meeting, but I have to say, I am fully in support of the five-member board. But I recognize, my view doesn't carry weight. It's a referendum anyway, so let's get it out there to the voters and let them decide and have this argument in the public discourse, because that is what was enshrined in the charter when the town was founded, and let's take it to the voters and see. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Mr. Hiss, you're recognized.
Bob Hiss, Precinct 3. I mean, racist. Sorry, Diane. I'm on the Town Government Study Committee, and we had a lot of debate on this topic. I just wanted to share some of the other points of view that came out on it with the group tonight, some of which Mr. Murren was listing. One of the key reasons I voted for the Strong Town Administrator was it was going to take work off of the backs of the selectmen, who, for all the reasons the previous speaker just said, I think are overworked, regardless of the number that are there, when we're asking them to do all the executive duties. But with the Strong Town Administrator, we've relieved them of the executive duties. We freed up their time to not respond to the snowplow issue or the streetlight issue, but to get Strong Town Administrator and Strong Department heads through that Town Administrator that they will go take care of those things on their behalf. And they have, we have freed up their time for the strategic issues and the planning issues and the forecasting issues that aren't getting done, but not the pressing day-to-day topics. So that was one of the topics that came up at our group, which is why there were some that initially weren't in favor of the five-member board. We've talked about the open meeting point, but I think a key thing is, we're on Milton cable access. I think people like watching it. It gives me comfort that it is open and transparent when the selectmen are making their views known publicly and, as Kevin said, living or dying by their votes. I think there's an issue of cost. So I think you're all aware, a selectman may get a paltry remuneration, $1,500, I think, for a selectman, $1,800 for the chair, small beans. But they are eligible as employees for health care. And I'm not sure what our costs are. Some public, you know, private plans are 20 grand a year, ours might be 13, 15. But if one or two other selectmen were to take advantage of this, and some recent selectmen have, you look at that over five years, you're somewhere to another 100 or 200K worth of health care costs we'd take on over a five-year period if one or two of them were to take it on. So there's some real budgetary cost to having additional selectmen should they take on those health care costs. So that was a point. I think another compelling one that was brought up is, I mean, some of my friends on this side of the room, the problems they're worried about in town are overrides coming and high taxes. So some of the folks in this side of the room, folks I've gotten to know, they're worried about affordable housing. They're worried about high-quality schools. But has anybody thought there, and any of the committees you're serving on is saying, "Man, if we only had two more selectmen, we'd got that baby licked." And I just can't think of it. I mean, all the, we know what some of these issues are, they're hard choices, but having two more people who now have planning and strategy jobs, to me, was not going to be the solution to all the things that ail the town. So that was one of the reasons that I thought that it was a support for this issue. So if I look at all those points, we've raised a bunch of points, we've got a new form of government coming, regardless of what happened in other towns, our Town Administrator about the take on new duties should the state pass this, our selectmen who are here having to work with it, new department heads now have to look to the Town Administrator, not necessarily to the Board of Selectmen. They've got to figure out those puzzle pieces. You as citizens now have to look to the selectmen having new duties and Town Administrator having new duties. So to me, I'd rather see this thing go through like a term of the Town Administrator, under the Strong Town Administrator rule, which is about a three-year process. Let's get that settled out, and then if we've got problems, let's come back and go solve this thing with a five-member board. So those are some of the thoughts that were bandied about in our committee from me and others. I wanted to share some of those, but thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Hiss. Mr. Mullin, you're recognized.
Peter Mullin, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2, and member of the Town Government Study Committee. Mr. Murren asked essentially, what's the rationale of this article? Why are we going from three to five? This article is a companion article with the Strong Town Administrator article that we passed at the last town meeting. As the town existed prior to the adoption of the Strong Town Administrator article, essentially, the three-member Board of Selectmen is the chief executive board of this town. The three of them together essentially manage $100 million a year operation. And it is $100 million, even though the schools are 50% of the budget. There's certainly things in terms... budget, there's certainly things in terms of fiscal planning, in terms of needs for overrides, in terms of, um, personnel matters, um, the selectmen are certainly involved with matters that involve the schools. That's, a three-member board is running that, and those members of that board cannot speak to each other about any matter of town business outside of a posted meeting. They can't even say to each other, "Hey, why do, why did you say that at the last meeting?" Or, "Have, do you know the answer to this question?" They're not supposed to deliberate at all, they're not supposed to talk at all with regard to the business of the town outside of a posted meeting, per the open meeting law. Now, Mr. Murn asked what's changed. Well, certainly the interpretation of the open meeting law has changed. For years and years, the selectmen communicated substantially outside of meetings. They had public meetings, but they also talked about things outside. And recently enforcement of the, uh, open meeting law has been assigned to the, um, Attorney General's office, and there are much more narrow views taken with regard to the open meeting law, and the selectmen, I think, have rightly been, um, paying attention to those interpretations and have not been communicating. But it makes it very, it makes it much harder for them to act as the executives of the town. No one is attempting by means of this article to evade the open meeting law. It's entirely appropriate for two members of a five-member board to talk about something relating to the jurisdiction of their board. It's not evading, it's just promoting and facilitating. With regard to, um, we adopted the strong-town administrator article, part of that is also changing the role of the Board of Selectmen. They're no longer going to be the chief executive of the town. That's going to be the town administrator, the town administrator is supposed to be running the place and is supposed to be accountable to the board. The board's going to be more in the nature of a board of directors, overseeing, planning, identifying problems. We haven't had a five-year fiscal plan in a number of years. I know that the Board of Selectmen says that there's, there's, I believe, a meeting coming up with regard to a, a five-year fiscal plan. But the Board of Selectmen have been tied up in so many, um, administrative matters that they haven't had time to plan and to, um, look down the road and see what problems need to be addressed. The role of the Board of Selectmen will be different, um, with a five-member board and a strong-town administrator. The other argument that's been made tonight as to why we shouldn't adopt this is that "Don't we need more time?" That was addressed by the Town Government Study Committee. The article that's before you provides that this cannot be implemented prior to the town election in 2017. If there's not quick, uh, action within the legislature, it would be the election of 2018 when the five-member board would be enacted. There's going to be a town-wide referendum before this can be implemented, if this body votes it tonight. I would urge the body to vote it tonight, we need to make this change. It goes hand-in-hand with the stra, the strong-town administrator. We're going to have a better-run town, and I would urge you to vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Hurley, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five. I just want to say a couple of things. You know, first of all, in terms of whether it's five members, three members, we're going to be a, going forward, a policy-setting board. That doesn't mean necessarily we'll have less work to do, our work's going to be different. Uh, our, our work's going to be more planning and thinking about the overall, uh, structure of, of the town, um, the overall direction we want to see the town go, just like any other board of directors would be. Some of which we do, well, a lot of which we do now anyways, it's just we wear two hot hats and it makes it a lot more difficult to do. So whether it's three or five, what we do is going to be the same. What I am concerned with, and, and I want to throw the gauntlet out now, is, is right now, we're going to have a town, a strong-town administrator coming in that can't, doesn't have the control of even the workforce of, let alone the schools, half the rest of the town. And, and how is that strong-town administrator going to be able to do a proper job in terms of managing workforce when there's so much of the workforce they can't manage? So the gauntlet is thrown, that's what we need. We need to be able to consolidate, we need to be able to regionalize, we need, we need to be able to, to save this town some real money by doing the kind of management that we're capable of doing. And, and without that, I don't think we're going to. So, so that's what I want to see. The other point I wanted to make is, um, with respect to some of those planning things that Mr. Mullin was referring to, we have been doing those things. Keep in mind that we've had, um, we've had a town administrator that's been working two jobs effectively for, you know, up until the last six or eight months, and, and, you know, the town, the, you know, the town, the, the administration right now is understaffed. And, uh, and that certainly has, has hindered the process, has slowed it down, but it's not stopped it. We have a three-year, a five-year financial forecast coming out. We had one last year, as a matter of fact, that I, I sat on the, the working group that developed it, did a, did a damn good job at it, too. Uh, and, and the one coming out this year is a follow-on on that one, and it will be presented November third. We've done a lot of other things, we've done a lot of planning stuff. The, the article that I put forth on, um, last year, our last town meeting, uh, in terms of the, um, you know, a, a method for perhaps, um, stabilizing the, the debts to allow us to build the, uh, fire stations and, um, and the DPW facility. We've, um, put together, um, an affordable housing, housing reduction plan, um, we've done a master plan. Now, the master plan wasn't all our doing, it was also the planning board, but I, I could still remember where the initial idea came from, and I think it came from me at a meeting with Emily. So it was, it was over a few glasses of wine. So, uh, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. As well as you're recognized.
LOLs, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. Um, I'll try to be very brief. I disagree that these two provisions go hand-in-hand, the strong-town administrator and the five-person Board of Selectmen. I think they're two very major changes to town government, and I think we ought to take our time. We haven't even implemented the strong-town administrator yet, and I think that's going to be a major change. There's going to be a lot of difference and interplay between the town administrator, the Board of Selectmen, the departments that report to her, the departments that don't report to her. I think, I would recommend that we wait for a couple of years, we can have town discussions, we can have letters to the editor, we can have programs on Milton Cable TV, but let's first implement the strong-town administrator, see how that works with the three-person Board of Selectmen. I think the Board of Selectmen are recommending that we wait on this, so I would urge a no vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Ms. Sheridan, you're recognized.
Hi, Lynn Delly Sheridan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. We're, um, we've heard a lot of different views and opinions tonight. We've heard people say that we need to take more time. I think that the way that this has been written gives us plenty of time, and I think that just as we have diverse, um, ideas and comments here, we need to let the townsfolk, um, have their chance to vote as well. So I strongly urge people to vote in favor of this, let it go to the town folk to be able to vote in favor or against this, um, change to our number of Board of Selectmen's. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Okay, folks, this will require a majority vote. All those in favor of the Recommendation Law Committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. We are now on...
Standing vote, Mr. Moderator. I think we should have a standing vote, but put our money where our mouths are.
Are you two folks standing? Thank you. You all may be seated, we have seven members standing. So for any newer town meeting members especially, our rules call for if seven town meeting members question the, the voter, the moderator, often it's not done necessarily that they question my reading of the vote, but it will require a standing vote. So I'm going to, in a minute, assign some tellers and we'll do a standing vote. Okay, uh, I have just drafted six folks, six town meeting members to act as tellers. I would like everyone that is currently standing for some reason other, other than the tellers to please take your seats. I want any town meeting members who wish to vote on this, who are sitting behind the aisle to make sure they are no longer sitting, or at least they can sit along the front of that wall. Actually, no, you have to come down because one of the problems is, if people leave to use the facilities, they'll get erroneously counted. Any town meeting member who wishes to be counted on this vote, please be sitting in front of the aisle. Now, the folks that I've asked to be tellers, the two tellers over to my far left, you will count everybody on that section, and the front of the hall. Okay? Thank you. The two middle tellers, if you'll count everybody in the middle section, and the two gentlemen here, if you count everyone here. Now, what I'm going to do is ask everyone in favor to please rise, we'll give the tellers a time to count you, and then I'll ask you to take your seats. Thank you. All those in favor, please rise. Yes, sir, do you have a point of water? Okay. Excuse me, a member is asked, and, uh, what is this vote for or against? If you understand now, you are voting in favor of the motion to, uh, expand the Board of Selectmen from three members to two, five members. Well, it's, yes, I'm saying, yeah, but it is to send it to the town vote, it's to send it to the, the legislature, but that's the, the, uh, the subject of the article, of the motion. Yes, sir, I... The recommendation before the body is always the recommendation of the Warren Committee. Well, okay, folks. We're in the middle of the vote. Interestingly enough, if you look at the front of the hall, I think you will see the position of the Board of Selectmen. Okay, tellers. You folks ready with the count? Did the other person say you're writing it down? I'll give you some. But I'm going to have you hold it until I tell you, all right? So this is your teller three. So you do yes, you got no, and I just have to tear up one piece for me. So you guys have your count, you're all set? Excuse me, the tellers, uh, excuse me, in section one over here, are we all set? Yes, we are. The tellers in section two in the middle? I'm looking for them. Oh, there. It's the largest section, we'll give them more time, it looks like they're still counting. Mr. Zulus? Are we all set? No, I don't want the number, we're all set? Thank you. Would everyone please take your seats? Now, those tellers, except the tellers still stay at the front of the hall, we have more work for you. The tellers, hold on to those counts, I assume you've written them down somewhere. Now, will all those opposed please rise? And would the tellers please take those counts? Thank you, sir. Mr. Zulus, section two?
Mr. Moderator, seventy-four yes and thirteen no.
Thank you, sir. Steve, uh, section three?
Nine yes, thirty-six no.
That was nine yes and thirty-six no, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. The standing vote for Article Six was one thirty-four yes, sixty-three no, the motion carries. Thank you. And thank you to the tellers for your assistance, I appreciate it. Okay, folks, we are now on to our last two articles of the night, and I'd like to recognize the chairman of our planning board, Emily Innis, for a couple of comments that I think you will find helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Emily Keys Innis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, and Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Emily Keys Innes, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, and chairman of the planning board. I have a quick update for you tonight, and then I have some comments on our zoning initiative and on both of the remaining articles for tonight's meeting. First, the update, the planning board in June of this year amended the draft master plan that was out and accepted it as the master plan of the community, so it is our, now under chapter eighty-one D, is our master plan. And despite Tom's comments, it had many, many, many authors, and obviously, I would like to thank all of those who participated in the process. The planning board has appointed Cheryl Taguayis as our member for the Master Plan Implementation Committee. If you remember, Town Meeting this time last year authorized such a committee. Katie Conlin is the Board of Selectmen's member. We are looking for three more, and the town as a whole has been doing a drive for volunteers. There is a form that you can fill out, I believe it's both at Town Hall and online. I know many people here have volunteered, and to anybody who may be watching from home, it is very worthwhile. So we are looking for members for the Master Plan Implementation Committee and hope to appoint them by the end of this calendar year. The planning board this year undertook something new. Starting in June, we began a new initiative to look at how we do zoning articles and draw in more public input into that process than just the public hearing that we typically have right before town meeting, whether the May or the October. We held three public forums throughout the summer. As you may know, with a town meeting in October, our deadline for getting the articles in is August, which means that any work that we do after the spring town meeting must necessarily happen in the summer. We realized this was a risk, and one of the many things that we learned is it is awfully difficult to get public input over the summer. So we are looking forward to next May and next fall, and we'll actually begin our process for next fall in January this year to give us plenty of time. The other thing that we learned from this process is starting to get a feel for really how to reach out to people. It's something that started even before the master plan process, it's something that we're continuing. If you would like to be aware of initiatives that the planning board is doing, Tim Szerwinski, our assistant town planner, is maintaining an email list. We also quite frequently send everything that we have over to Susan Galvin with her excellent town meeting members list. She doesn't share the emails with us, but she has been very gracious in blasting out to all of you who are on that list information. So that's something else we're continually working on. We've used social media, we've used print media, we've used the email blast, we've written out to all the different organizations. And what we've found for this process, and especially our two newer members found, is writing zoning is difficult. So some of the longer articles were not ready for you, and we thank the Board of Selectmen for being very flexible in their deadlines this year. We did have two articles that we thought could go forward, but at our public hearing and also at the warrant committee's hearing on these articles, information came forward that had not come forward during the public process. So the last thing I want to tell you tonight is that the planning board is in full agreement that both of these articles should be sent back to us for further study and action, and we hope that you will vote with the warrant committee and ourselves to do so. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Innes, excuse me. So we're at Article Seven. After Mrs. Innes' comments, I would tell, Article Seven is to amend Chapter Six of the general bylaws amplified music that was submitted by the planning board, and the warrant committee recommended that the subject matter of this article be referred to the planning board for further study, which the planning board has just indicated to you they agree with. Mr. Hayes, are you, do you wish to be recognized to speak to that, or are you all set? Thank you. Mr. Hurley, do you wish to speak to this?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Could I make a motion that we, in light of the fact that these are going back for further study, waive the reading of the two articles?
I've already waived them. Thank you. Okay, so the motion in front of you is for Article Seven, to refer the subject matter of this article be referred to the planning board for further study. All those in favor of the recommendation to the warrant committee, say aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article Eight is to amend the chapter ten of the general bylaws, non-conforming dimensions. I will not read the article in front of you. It is submitted by the planning board. The warrant committee had no recommendation at the time of the printing. I'll recognize the chair of the warrant committee for the recommendation.
So Ted Hayes, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member. We actually do have a recommendation, it is in the warrant. I think you're looking at my comment section, which I failed to edit at the last minute when we did manage to squeeze a vote in.
Okay. Would you like, would you please read the recommendation of the warrant committee?
It's recommended that the subject matter of this article be referred to the planning board for further study.
Terrific, thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation to warrant committee, say aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. I am looking for a motion adjourned. It's been moved, seconded. All in favor? Thank you very much, we are adjourned.